I want to welcome you to the work session at 4:00 for the June 5, 2012, meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. In our work session today, the only item of discussion we have is the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2012/13. Mr. DeFebbeau, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor today to present to the City Commission and the people of Bowling Green a 2012-2013 budget message. We're going to use a team approach. I'm going to be the front man to essentially set the table of the bigger themes. And following me will be different members of the budget team. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank a bunch of people who have been involved in this process that got us to this point today. As you can see on the memo, we have a budget team made consisting of Katie Schaller, Jeff Mizel, Michael Grubbs, Wilma Brown, and I'm happy to announce a new member, Erin Ballou, who's shown herself to be a person of exceptional skill, so we'd like to add her in the future to our budget team. I also want to thank all the employee groups that helped us put this budget together. Management met with all the employee groups to get their input. All the contract agencies that we fund throughout the community had an opportunity to submit their requests, so we think it represents a holistic plan for our organization and for the community at large. By way of explanation, I think we all would agree that a budget is more than just a set of numbers. It actually, in my opinion, is a plan or tool that helps to put our values into action. We believe it's the best tool that any political body can use to say what it believes in, because after all, where one puts their money is where one's values generally are. Putting together a budget is somewhat of a mixture of science, accounting science and numbers. Also, it's involved, to some degree, a reading of the economic times that the organization is in. That's always important. If this tool before you is to be of any value to you as a political body, it needs to be accurate and also needs to be valid in the assumption it makes as to values and to what we call reading the sign of the times. There's no doubt that the nation, City of Bowling Green, and our organization have been through a difficult time over the last number of years. As mentioned before, we cut approximately $3.6 million from our operating budgets in fiscal year 2009 and 2010 and incrementally since then. This has helped us to produce what we feel is a leaner, more efficient public service company, and also laid an important foundation. We wouldn't be here today making the recommendation that we are making if it wasn't for your approval of past plans to make the difficult decisions in past years. Yesterday, I had a local developer come in my office, and we were chatting, and we were talking about the economy. And we both were sitting there, had the same feeling that, you know, things are getting better, and all of a sudden, something happens that just takes the bloom off the rose. This is very uncertain times. I think all of us will agree that, at least economists would agree, that the recession has ended officially, but are things ever going to return to how they were back in the heady times in 2007? We believe that that's an irrelevant question. We have devised, with your help, a new organization that is able to meet the demands of this community and reflects the priorities of our organization, what the people demand of us. Our primary source of revenue is the occupation tax and provides the best evidence of where we are financially. It has been tracking for the past year at about 4%. That's sufficient enough to allow us to maintain what we call our new normal, the one, the organization we've created over the last three or four years. But it's not enough, we believe, to return to a time where we had sufficient money to do most things we wanted. So where does that leave us? How do we respond to these facts? And how do we read the times? Simply stated, we believe that the city should hold its course and make incremental changes and priorities and add to those needs incrementally, as we see that revenues are substantiated and we feel confident in moving forward to invest more aggressively. So we want to stay the course and grow the roots of our new normal, our new organization, deeper. It doesn't mean that we're not going to provide things that people need. Quite to the contrary, we are. First, it's important to tell the commission, and you already know this, and to the public that in this budget contains no request for any type of tax increase, whether that be property, any kind of rate increase at all, nor do we recommend that the city take on any more debt. We will continue, as will be explained by Kate and Jeff and Mike and others, to extract incremental savings as the opportunity presents itself, as we've done over the last couple of years. But we also want to invest in some high priorities. First is the need to invest in public safety, which is, people won't live in our community unless it's a safe community. The 800 megahertz radio project between us and the county is going to be moving on its second year. We've already, with the help of some budget amendments, saved about $2 million toward that goal over the last couple of years, and that will take a lot of form this coming year. We're going to invest funds in sidewalks. All of us have gone past Covington Street and noticed that the large stormwater project that we are undertaking right now. We hope to continue doing stormwater projects throughout the community. We hope to invest in two road projects, and Michael Grubbs will present what those are with the help of all of you, and we'll hope to get those done this year. We recommend that we make good in our commitment to the employees and provide them a cost of living and a step as been agreed upon by protocol in prior years. Overall, to put an end to my presentation, we believe, the budget team and myself, as your manager, believe that the city is in good financial shape. We'll have sufficient funds to pay our bills, which is always nice, have sufficient funds to honor our debts, sufficient funds to modestly invest in our employees, and to make highly prioritized investments in roads, public safety, and stormwater and recreation. I would like now, with your courtesy, to invite Jeff Mizel up, who will give you an overview of our revenue picture for the coming year. Jeff?
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Slim. Appreciate that.
I'm here for you.
All right, we'll jump in here. I won't Terry too much on these slides, but I wanted to kind of highlight some things on the revenue side. First of all, this chart was updated as of this morning, so it may not match exactly what's in your books. It's less than a $10,000 difference, so if you'll give us that courtesy, we'll get it caught up with you later. Anyway, we start out, though, this is basically an overview of all funds, and we, coming in here with FY '13 recommended of just over $92 million for all funds on revenue. That's, like I mentioned, just under $10,000 difference from what we put out in your books. We had a minor change. Then we come in with 95.4, almost 95.5 million, all funds and expenditures, which results in roughly $3.4 million net use of fund balance. Most of our funds, we always make sure they have plenty of fund balance if we plan on spending any of that expenditures exceeding revenues. We did not have any problems with that based on what we were seeing in all the other funds and their fund balance. Down below here is your general fund, budgeting revenues of 52 million, 52, 52,382,000; expenditures at 53,132. Katie will cover the expenditures in detail. This 750,000 will also be discussed later as use of fund balance on a couple of road projects. I will mention, though, as part of this 92 million, 13.4 million of that is actually transfers between funds, so that inflates your overall budget every year. So really, in real dollars, you're looking at more like a $79 million budget overall, if my math is correct. This is more or less a summary of how our funds come in, what every dollar represents. On the left side here, we have the all funds again. As you can see, 43.2% of all the revenue that comes into all funds is generated from our occupational fees. Next biggest category is your taxes, which would be your property taxes and insurance premium taxes is also in this category. And as you can see, there's your big transfers in number, 14.6% of that 92 million is the transfers coming in from other funds. And then you get into your miscellaneous and all these other categories mentioned here below. Over here on this right side, you have your general fund, and for FY '13, our occupational fees are going to make up almost 72% of our revenues. Next biggest category, again, is your taxes, which includes your property taxes, insurance premium taxes at 23.9%, and then everything else falls in line after that. Next biggest category looks like would be license and permits at 1.7% of your general This next slide is a 10-year history of our general fund revenues. As you can see, back in 2003, we had a, that was when we had a 1.5% occupational tax. We increased it that year, and you can see what the occupational taxes did from '03 all the way to 2007, when we reduced it to 185%. And then you can see the overall growth, too, in revenues is this top bar here, the bars. And, like I said, in '07, we reduced our occupational tax rate to 1.85. As you see, a slight retraction. And then, again, a level off in '09. Then you hit the recession period of '09 to '10, on and to '11. '11 was actually our lowest overall year. One thing that happened that year, too, is we pulled out the transit grant, if you'll remember that, during that fiscal year, which also lowered that. But for the most part, we've kind of maintained, considering everything that's happened in the last four or five years with the economy. And then, as you can see, we're estimating a finish of roughly somewhere between 51.5 and 52 million this year for general fund, depending on how we, what kind of June we have. So we feel pretty confident that we'll reach that mark there for the FY '12 year, which is our current year. The next couple of slides, we're going to break down revenues just by category, and I'll kind of tell you what all is included by line. But property taxes is made up of your real estate tax, your personal property tax, motor vehicle and boats, which are coming from the state. Same thing with your franchise taxes that are assessed by the state. And then we have in lieu of taxes. We're budgeting the same amount for FY '13, the $10,000,94,000, basically because we're not going to quite hit the FY '12 budget again this year. I thought this would be the year we kind of catch things up and meet budget, but I feel like we're still going to fall maybe 100,000 short, real estate taxes around the same thing, and personal property taxes. And we'll get real close to this figure here, maybe a little bit above that, but we'll still not meet that, so we've held this constant for the FY '13 year. Other taxes include your insurance premium taxes. We increased that budget slightly, about $65,000 for FY '13, based on what we're seeing in the FY '12 current year, having a real good year. As you probably seen in my bullets we put out the last couple of months, we've actually met budget in that category and a little bit above last year. The other items that fall into the other taxes include your natural gas franchise. We reduced it slightly, 40,000, just based on what we've seen with actuals. Bank franchise fees are also in there, up that about 9,000. And then your telecommunications franchise tax, that the state sends us now, we've reduced that about 47,000. That was, that's been cut a little bit, as you probably saw in some of the press releases, that was cut about 2% to 3%. So we're anticipating slight hit there, 47,000, also gauging that based on what we're seeing in FY '12 for actuals. So overall, we're looking at just a slight increase with the other taxes making up that increase there, 24,000, from '12, 5 to '12, 5, 24. Now we get into the real meat, the occupational fees. As I mentioned, this category is done fairly well this year, and this is really what makes up your overall increase of that 1,672 number that you saw for general fund. This category is going to make up 1,555,000 of that overall increase. The withholding taxes have been very good this year. We've averaged somewhere between 5% and 6% growth the last six months, actually from the start of this current calendar year. So those continue to do well. We even hit, a couple of months, we hit above 10% growth compared to the prior month. So we base this on what we're seeing this year, along with what we've seen over the last couple of years. This looks like a big increase, 1,555, but again, this year, I feel like we're going to finish right around this $29.8 million number. So when you consider that, we're only budgeting about a close to 2% growth in that category, which I feel safe with. This next line is your .35 of the 1.85, which we still kind of keep an eye on. We still break it out this way, budgeting a slight increase there around 200,000. Again, this is the increase on not only the withholdings, but also the net profit portion. And so this looks maybe a little funny here, but we felt more comfortable with this number based on what we're seeing this year, because net profit fees, we budgeted close to 6.5 million, if my memory serves correctly. I don't know that we'll meet that budget for FY '12. It's going to be close. We're inching closer and closer, but I've held the line item budget for the net profits along with that surface enhancement fee portion for net profits, held it the same as FY '12 budget, so no increase on those. Your increase is all in your withholding fees. The rest of occupational fees, as you know, we have some business registration fees. We didn't adjust that much from the FY '12 budget, actually slightly down 3,000. And then we also have some transit permit fees that fall into play there in occupational fees, and we adjusted those up slightly, 3,000, for those, basically a wash. So overall, you're looking at an increase of about 1.5 million from budget to budget, and then depending on where we finish this current year, but I think we'll be right around 37 million overall occupational fees, only about a half million increase there compared to the actual. The next category is your licenses and permits. This includes your alarm permit fees that we charge. You may not know, but we charge a $10, $15 fee now for commercial alarm permit fees. Don't charge anything for residential, but we do make them, at least report that they have one. Also included here is building permit fees. We've increased that budget 53,000, based on what we've seen in FY '12, been a pretty decent year. Planner review fees, we increased that budget 64,000 from the FY '12, again, based on some good growth this year. And then the electrical permits, we adjusted that up 13,000. So overall increase there in that category is about 156,000. FY '12 was just a good year for commercial building projects, and we didn't quite, we weren't quite comfortable raising it all the way to where we think we'll finish this year, but we were comfortable with this number based on the last couple of years and leveling that out. So we've got a $903,500 budget there for those line items. Grants, this is just in general fund again. We do not budget any grants until we know for sure they're coming, so we rarely have a big budget starting out, but we budget that based on what we know that's still in the general fund. We also try to restrict what we put in the general fund in terms of grants. We've only been putting in the grants that we, money that we operate on and we keep for general fund purposes. Okay, your charges for services, those are made up of the school tax collection fees. We collect, we receive 2% fee on the Bowling Green Independent School property taxes that we collect for them. Park rentals are in here for Fountain Square Park, Section 8 inspection fees that we're charging out now. Fireworks permit fees are included here, along with the cemetery. Overall, we're budgeting about a $42,500 increase from last year, just based on actual performance we've seen. That's what we were comfortable with. And then your next line is your parks and rec. As you know, you all, that includes all of your general fund parks, programs, fitness, recreation. Budgeting just a slight increase there to, from 366 to 377.5. Rely mostly on the parks staff to project those revenues. We kind of look them over, and we were comfortable with that figure there. So overall, you're looking at roughly 46, 42, what is that, 34 and 12, roughly 46,000 increase in these categories. Miscellaneous includes your interest earnings, rental income, sale of real estate or equipment, parking fees, ABC, license fees, judgments and settlements, contributions and donations, and just pretty much a flat budget compared to FY '12 there, $2,500 increase. And then your transfers in, we've already talked about that. These would be transfers in from other funds into the general fund. We had a 109 budget, and I think that was from workers' comp last year. We are in some other things. We are budgeting zero to be transferred back in for FY '13, didn't see a need in it. This estimated actual, just to comment on that, as you probably saw in our last budget amendment, we had roughly a little over $1 million under spending on our old Morgantown Road project. So we transferred that money back in from that capital projects fund that went back into the general fund. Like I said, about 1.1 million of that was related to the old Morgantown Road project. 930,000, that was where bond proceeds, we got permission to use and move back into the general fund, used for some other capital projects, along with the debt service on that bond issue. We wanted to finish that money off because that was 2007 GO bond money that we needed to get spent, so it's gone, taken care of. That's all I have. Well, one more slide here, I'm sorry. This is a comparison of all funds, just by revenue type, as we've kind of covered. Again, this is all funds, breakdown by what the categories have discovered. I covered it by general fund. This is covering it by, if you look, all funds. And here's your difference from '12 to '13, 2.9% increase. I'm going to let Katie take over, walk you through the expenditure budget, line items. You want to take revenue questions now or wait till the end? Doesn't matter to me, but...
Do you want to have any questions?
I'll hold my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to briefly go through the slides related to the expenditures for the budget. When you look at the expenditures, we are proposing a slight increase over the fiscal year 2012 adopted budget. If you're looking at all funds, it's 2.9% or approximately $2.7 million. And when you're looking at the general fund, it's about 1.16% or about $610,000. If you were to remove capital improvement projects, which we funded in both fiscal year '12 and what we're proposing in fiscal year '13, the general fund budget is up about $565,000, still only about 1.12%. And as Jeff had mentioned, and I will briefly discuss it a little bit later, we are projecting in both funds use of fund balance. But again, we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail later on. As with the revenues, this is a breakout of the expenditures by all funds and by the general fund categories, based on where the money is spent. And as you can see here in all funds, public safety makes up 29.3%, which is the largest piece of the pie, and it does the same under general fund at 45.3%. We round out the bottom with intergovernmental and community services, which is essentially your agency funding. But then in between, of course, transfers out are the next largest categories, and I think Jeff mentioned that the transfers out are, in some instances, somewhat of a duplication of figures, because we have to transfer out of general fund into other funds and then spend the money out of those other funds. So it's kind of a duplication of numbers, and it inflates the overall budget. Again, similar to a slide we had on the revenue side, this is a 10-year history of our actual expenditure experience. And as you can see, from fiscal year three, we started a pretty significant increase in our expenditures, in part because we had added quite a bit of personnel expenses during that time. And with the increase in the occupational license fee at that time, we were projecting to do more capital projects and spend more of that money. But then, as you can see, as the recession came in, we did cut our budget back, and then the estimated fiscal year '12 budget does have us coming in at over, I think it's about $55 million. Much of that is a carryforward in terms of monies that we've projected to spend, but haven't yet spent them either in fiscal year '11, they're carried forward into '12. We may or may not get a chance to spend them all in '12, so they will then carry forward into fiscal year '13. Most of that's going to be your capital projects. This line here in the middle is where our personnel expenses fall on the chart. And as you can see, for the most part, our personnel expenses have remained rather flat in the last several years, and primarily that's because we have made several changes in our personnel, whether we've reduced the number of personnel that we have, where we've combined some jobs, we've kept key positions vacant for a while. That's helped us to basically absorb any increases in CERS rates, as well as any COLA or STEP that we've provided in those years. Personnel specifically, and I will go into specific detail on personnel changes a little bit later, but just an overview from the fiscal year '12 adopted budget to our fiscal year '13 recommended, there is a slight increase of about 3.2% overall. Most of that, again, is in relation to our wages and overtime. We are including in that a COLA and a STEP increase, which averages about 4%. And then, of course, CERS rates are up. They've been up the last couple of years, and we don't have any control over that. It's what the state tells us we have to pay, so those are up a little bit. We were able to reduce some of our medical expense accounts. Primarily, that's because some of our employees are changing the particular plan that they're choosing, whether it's a family plan, maybe they've gone to the little bit less expensive tier 450 or 700 plan, so those costs have gone down. Plus, when we've had a position become vacant, we budget a flat amount, so it may be different from a previous employee in that position. from a previous employee in that position. Contractual services are actually down, in part because of reduction in our CIP projects from the fiscal year twelve to the fiscal year thirteen. Not all of the projects fall within the same category, so each year we have a little fluctuation with that. Also, similarly, our supplies and fixed assets are down again. A lot of that is in relation to our capital projects from one year to the next and the particular accounts that they fall into. But in addition, we have continued to, each year, look at our historical trend in spending, very similarly to what Jeff had mentioned about revenues. We do track our expenditures and we try to budget based on our historical trend. And so a lot of our expenses have gone down in this upcoming budget because of that. We were looking at deflating, if you will, our budget expenses and trying to keep more on track with actual expenses. Our subsidies and assistance is down, and that's because we're proposing to fund, primarily proposing to fund, three less agencies this year. So that does make up the vast majority of that decrease. We are also proposing to increase our contingency budget slightly by a little less than twenty-five thousand dollars. And again, that's because we have gone through our expenditure budget and cut out any fat that we could find. So I need to have a little bit of cushion somewhere to help offset some of those expenses as we start to get into the end of the fiscal year, like I'm doing right now in May and June, when some of the departments are running out of money and they need some help. And our transfers out, again, as Jeff had mentioned, this is somewhat of a duplication. Of this nine million dollars, two million of it, two million fifty thousand dollars is actually for capital projects. That money's moved out of general fund and placed in a capital expenditure account. And this year, our fiscal year twelve actual estimate is up. A lot of that is because we had set aside at the end of fiscal year eleven funds in the amount of about one million three hundred and fifty thousand to put into our technology fund, our equipment replacement fund, and the eight hundred megahertz replacement fund. So that money has carried forward into fiscal year twelve, and we obviously are just setting that aside and fund balance to help cushion those accounts when we do need to replace more equipment down the road, advance our technology replacement practices, as well as move forward with the eight hundred megahertz project. This is just a brief overview of the debt expense that's actually covered by the general fund. And this figure, this five million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand is actually included as a transfer out total. So that made up part of that other nine million dollar figure from the previous slide. There is a slight increase. This is primarily based on just the schedule of debt. It's laid out ahead of time, and this is just where we're at at this point in expenditures. The only new item was the refinancing of some of our GO debt, which will provide us the savings in the long run. We are projecting to use about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance. And as Jeff had mentioned previously, that is to cover two specific road projects that we have, and it would be the city's portion of those projects. And that'll be discussed a little bit later under the CIP portion of this presentation. But we will still have an unassigned fund balance of three point eight million dollars available for use later on if needed.
That's over and above the twenty percent?
That is correct. That is over and above the twenty percent. The twenty percent is based on the fiscal year revenues, our estimated revenues for that fiscal year. And so that's the ten million four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar figure, minus, again, the seven fifty. That leaves us with the three point seven nine five. So if we have any unexpected expenses come up through the year, hopefully we'll be able to cover those without any problem. And this last slide here is all funds expenditures. Again, breaking it out by category, and you can see there is a slight increase, two point nine percent overall. When you look, obviously, our supplies are down and our subsidies and assistance are down. As I had mentioned earlier, they're modest decreases, and then the others are somewhat modest increases. If you do exclude personnel, if you take personnel completely out of the picture and you just look at our other expenditures, the FY thirteen budget is just up over a million dollars at about one hundred, or one million twenty thousand dollars in all funds. And if you were to remove the capital and just look at operating to operating, we're actually up just under ten thousand dollars at nine thousand eight hundred and four. And that's excluding personnel. So if personnel was not in the picture, we'd be doing pretty good. At this point, I'm going to step down, and Human Resources and Risk Management Director Mike Grubbs will review the proposed recommendations related to our personnel expenditures, followed by our capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty thirteen.
Any questions for Michelle before she leaves?
None from me.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Why don't you go, Bill?
Take a few minutes just to run through the personnel services portion of the fiscal year thirteen budget. Of course, these recommendations relate to wages, benefits, pay and classification, and our complement. The total impact of our recommendations in this budget and the general fund is just under one point three million dollars for next year. That's raises, benefits, any additional positions, upgrades, mandated CERS rates, which, as previously mentioned, continue, and we'll provide a little bit more information on that later. But for this coming year, our budget is up four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars due to the increase in the rates, with the predominant amount of that coming from the general fund. Full-time employee wages for next year, several years ago, around two thousand and six, the city commission adopted a policy where we would follow the Department of Local Government's recommendation on the Consumer Price Index increase in setting the COLA for the following year. The CPI increase for two thousand and eleven was two point nine six percent. So that is the amount that's recommended to adjust our classification pay schedules and for full-time pay increases this coming year. Most years since two thousand and six, we've been able to follow that. There was one year with the recession. City was not able to comply with our policy, and we amended it that one year. But we were able to go back last year and try to make up the difference. So I think we can say with some confidence, since two thousand and six, we've been able to maintain our pay schedule equal to the increase in the Consumer Price Index. We also, at one time, started a biannual step plan also in two thousand and six that went into effect July one of two thousand and seven. We had it for two years, then we had to defer it for two years due to the recession. Came back last year with a recommendation to reinstitute it using an annual half-step. That's helped us to even out the cost from one budget year to the next. We also are avoiding some problems that we found with doing the biannual step with some pay inequities. Overall, on average, the step increase would be one point two seven five percent this coming year. Depends on the pay schedule and also, for an employee that's at the beginning of their pay range, the percent is going to be higher compared to the top of the range because the amount of the step is the same for the entire step. So you can look at that and say, well, overall average, our employees will get an increase of just over four percent. Of course, they have to have been in their position a year. They also have to have at least satisfactory service in order to receive the step. Part-time employees, we're adjusting, proposing to adjust their pay schedule by twenty-seven cents an hour. That's an average of three percent across the part-time salaries. Also, if they've been employed a year, give them additional ten cents an hour to help get them above the starting rate. We have recommended some upgrades in the budget. All but four are part-time seasonal positions in parks. These are positions that we felt there was either internal equity issue or a situation where the employee had specifically taken on work outside of their class. And they're more specifically listed in your budget document. But examples are, one is an office associate position was eliminated, the other employee is performing the work of two positions. Again, there are three other positions listed in the budget document that we recommended a one-grade pay increase. And then we have several athletic staff assistants working out of class, either as laborers, women instructors, lifeguards, or head instructors. So we recommended changing the pay grades for those positions. With regard to the retirement, this coming year, the rate for, the city pays for hazardous duty, police, and fire will go up five point one percent to thirty-seven point six percent. And for non-hazardous employees, the city's rate is going up three point one percent to nineteen point five five. That rate increase is less than this past year. It's probably about half compared to what it was last year. However, it continues a trend. Looking back ten years, you can see the non-hazardous rate that we pay has gone up over two hundred percent. And for hazardous employees, one hundred and thirty-one percent. To give that a real-life comparison of our budget, going back ten years, ten years ago, we were spending one point six million dollars on retirement. This coming year, it will be six point seven million dollars. The fire department budget itself is twelve million, so that increase would almost fund half of the entire fire department. Now, that's not all totaled due to the rate increase. We've obviously raised salaries, we've added positions, we have more part-time employees on retirement now than we did ten years ago. But again, that shows the concern we've had for years, that the continued increase in the rates are very difficult for the city to continue.
Mike, on that, what do they, do you have any information on the next couple of years on that?
Long-term projections, without substantial changes to the retirement system, we could be paying fifty percent on hazardous duty in the next five years.
I heard that from another city this week.
Right.
As well.
Good news with our Employee Medical Benefits Plan. Due to plan design changes made three years ago, our costs are pretty much level compared to where they were in two thousand and nine. And in fact, so far, our costs for the fiscal year we're just ending appear to be no greater than they were last year. Therefore, we're not proposing any changes for fiscal year thirteen with regard to premium or plan design, although we are reviewing our prescription plan. We're also looking at a new wellness program with our Employee Benefits Committee. So we're looking at possibly implementing some changes in January, but definitely nothing with the fiscal year budget starting July first. Also, we, of course, have a separate trust fund reserve set up for the Employee Medical Fund, and that stands at four and a half million dollars, which is pretty much equal to what our expenditures are in one year. So I think that's good news that we have a reserve equal to one year of expenditures. Workers' comp and risk management, again, are safety programs that all departments work on or continuing to pay us dividends. We're in the Kentucky League Insurance Pool. They issue workers' comp rates, which we then discount thirty-five percent when we apply it to department budgets. We also have used that savings. There was a reference earlier, last year, this year, we transferred around a hundred thousand dollars from workers' comp back to the general fund. What we've done this coming year is we're transferring money from workers' comp to a new property and casualty fund that had been funded by the general fund. And that's going to help save the general fund money next year because we're doing more with our property and casualty and insurance programs. Just to take a look at our workforce, there are the different colors here. Blue is the police and fire full-time. Green is part-time seasonal, and the red is all other full-time employees. You can see that our high number of employees was seven hundred and fifty-nine in two thousand and eight. The next year, we're proposing seven hundred and thirty-six. So we're still down from where we were five years ago. We do have a few recommendations on new positions. One, communications dispatcher, to help us with scheduling, training, and turnover. But because the police department combined two office positions, we will not have a net increase in the number of full-time positions citywide next year.
Mike, may I ask another question at this point? With police, well, maybe specifically police, it's on my mind right now. How many officers are we usually down at any given time? Do we have an average?
We're down probably three at the moment, and we're in the late stages of hiring process. In fact, we're doing interviews next week for the next class. You know, when we finished the last class, we were even. But then, obviously, you'll have someone retire as soon as you fill your jobs or someone leave. But I think we're down three at the moment.
How about fire?
We are down two. We're down, well, tonight you've got one on the agenda, then we're down one other. And at our next commission meeting, we're going to recommend one more hire because we expect a retirement. Fire, we don't start a class until we have at least two or three people. But they're down two at the moment. Police is maybe down three at the moment.
Have we ever given any consideration to hiring above or complement?
We do that. We actually, in December, when we hired, we knew an officer was leaving, so we hired one extra then. And that's what we're proposing to do at the next commission meeting with fire, go ahead and hire one extra, expecting a retirement. So we have done that, but we've never attempted to hire multiple numbers without knowing the openings we're going to have. But we do at least try to hire one extra if we have a qualified candidate to hire.
Okay, thank you.
Part-time positions, we are recommending four additional lifeguards to help with the rotation there, to make sure we've got adequate coverage. We requested an additional intern working eighteen hours a week to allow college students the opportunity to gain experience in municipal government. We're looking at adding some part-time security parks rangers, again, all part-time, in order to give us some additional presence when we have recreation athletic events going on, especially at night. Water park, also community centers in the evening, having people available to walk patrons out to their vehicle. We have to close gates and monitor a number of locations after hours. So we're looking at transitioning from using police cadets back to having more dedicated rangers. As the police department has some cadet positions come vacant, we will eliminate those to help fund these ranger positions, with the police department losing no more than four cadet positions. In review, again, we're recommending a two point nine per six percent cost of living adjustment for full-time employees, plus the average one point two seven five percent merit step for eligible employees. Twenty-seven cent an hour adjustment for part-time, plus ten cents an hour if they've worked a year. Our budget includes funding the mandated CERS increases, no changes immediately to our medical plan, limiting the increase in the workforce to part-time and seasonal. We are contributing in the budget an additional four hundred thousand dollars to the closed police-fire retirement fund, and that's to help with the unfunded liability that's been identified. Does any questions about personnel before we move on to the capital budget? Capital improvement program is all projects in our budget that are twenty-five thousand dollars or more. It's a plan. Right now, we've got a one-year plan. You'll receive a three-year plan later on in the summer. But this is what we expect to accomplish during the next year. This slide gives you an overview of what the CIP has looked like for the last several years. Obviously, as the economy declined, our total capital budget has also declined. It's actually down forty-four percent from where we were in two thousand and seven, but you can also see that it's increased since two thousand and ten. Debt, of course, has increased. It's now seventy-one percent of our capital budget, but again, that's low compared to where it was two years ago. And the general fund portion is two point six million dollars. Again, low compared to where it was six or seven years ago, but definitely much better than it was in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. This chart gives an example of where the budget fits in terms of new capital, carryforwards, and debt service. New capital is five million dollars. The debt service is thirteen point two, although that does include reimbursements that come from Western and from Warren County. So that's not all city money that's spent there. Carryforwards are projects that have been identified during fiscal year twelve that were not part of the original capital budget and that we plan, that we have the money for now, and we plan to carry forward for next year, and that's only three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars compared to the total budget. Then, breaking the budget down a different way, looking at our strategic goals of community livability, improved traffic flow, and sustainable city government. It's pretty much divided up, almost a third each way. Community livability, one point five million dollars. Traffic flow, one point seven million. And then city government, which is technology and facilities and equipment, just under two point one million dollars. Community livability, that would include the stormwater mitigation, of course, continuing our efforts to address priority projects with five hundred thousand dollars budgeted. Already mentioned, of course, was the basin at Covington Batzel Sink. The South Park Dive Project is completed or near completion. Projects underway for this year are Glen Lally Audubon, and then also Small House Ridge Crest. We're also including another hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the Whiskey Run Treatment Project. Whiskey Run is a large down Whiskey Run is a large downtown drainage system that we want to install, point of discharge treatment, equipment so that we can handle solids, and before that gets into the river. Sidewalks, another $400,000. We started this program around 2008 and then had to suspend it a couple of years, started it back last year. Previously, we were using fund balance for the sidewalk program, this year, we're using funds out of our new revenues, and then we'll also use $100,000 of state funds to continue reconstruction of existing sidewalks. Parks and Recreation, $400,000 to make improvements to existing facilities. At Carriacus Park, we'll spend $100,000 to refurbish the two front tennis courts, and also to reconstruct the basketball court. H.P. Thomas Park on Cave Mill and Shawnee, install a new picnic shelter with restrooms that will cost us about $175,000. That will serve the neighborhood park, the dog park, and as well as the Greenways Trail that connects Shawnee with Lost River Cave and Valley. Russell Sims Aquatic Center, we want to install a new UV disinfection system that will greatly speed up the disinfection, and also reduce the amount of time that the pool might have to be closed because of an event. Lampkin Park, we want to complete the renovations at Fields 1 and 2, which is the dugouts and also to handle some drainage problems. And then also at Roland Bland, we'll spend around $25,000 to replace the playground equipment there that serves ages 2 through 5. And true, improve, improve traffic flow, just over $1.7 million. We'll use $850,000 of state liquid fuel tax money to resurface roads approximately five miles. The Small House Cave Mill Realignment Project, the city is proposing to put aside this year $500,000, and that would come from Carry Forward Fund, I'm sorry, from Fund Balance, encumbered fund balance. We also set aside that same amount of money this year that we're just ending toward a total $2.5 million shared project, so hopefully between the two years, we'll have a million, we'll have $1 million to go toward that project. And then Hennessy Way Realignment to help with the congestion at Corvette Drive, we're proposing $250,000, again, from unassigned fund balance, to go toward a shared project that we expect to get state money from, and so those are the two projects that we're expecting to use unassigned fund balance next year. We're also going to use some state money to continue to upgrade downtown signals that we started in 2008. These are at Center and 11th, and Chestnut at 10th. Moving to sustainable city government, some major projects involving technology, information technology, just over $411,000. The Storage Area Network, or SAN, would be used to, that's our database, and also, we want to have redundancy backup system. Again, some of the technology that we have presently is at end-of-life, we're having trouble getting it, getting maintenance, we're getting equipment. The voice-over IP telephone system is a project we have talked about for a number of years. The project cost is $425,000, we've already set aside all but $161,000. That will help us migrate to new technology, we'll be able to actually have a payback on this project in about three or four years, we'll be able to do a lot of the maintenance work ourselves in our IT department, so the final amount of money coming from this year will actually pay back in the near future. We also want to replace our email system, we want to integrate, move to a different software that integrates better with mobile applications. The police department, over $500,000. Most of this is state money or other funds other than general fund. We want to upgrade the software for the CAD 911 system, again, similar problems with the software, and also want to move from a text-based to a window-based environment. They need to replace a digital audio recorder, particularly as we moved to voice-over IP, some of the equipment's not compatible, and also, we have a location where we're not presently able to record. And then we also want to continue to buy in-car cameras and a server. This phase should complete all of the patrol vehicles except for pool cars, and then we'll have one more phase next year that should handle most of the rest of the cars in the department. Fire would use $150,000 of their Fire Improvement Fund money to look at replacing the Firehouse software with other software that would provide better service to the fire department. Equipment and vehicle replacement, for the first time in a couple of years, we're recommending and having funds available to replace police cars. We would replace 14 cars at a cost of just over $400,000, and that, of course, includes all of the specific related equipment for the cars. The highest priority need in Public Works is to replace a backhoe, which we would also get some trade-in value on. We're also proposing to, for the first time, pay for tools for fleet mechanics. I'd like to call Public Works Director Jeff Lashley up for just a second to explain that project.
Historically, fleet mechanics have provided their own tools in that operation. It appears to be a growing trend with government fleets to have city-owned or purchase tools for the mechanics, and there's a few advantages of that. First off, the personnel has the right tools for the job, it's safer. A new mechanic coming in may not have a full complement or set of tools, so the mechanic can come in day one and have, be able to produce, get the production. So, in our ability to inventory and track these tools, this is a one-time purchase as we see it, the tools will have a lifetime warranty, and again, the mechanic will be responsible for keeping up with their stuff, and it will be inventoried.
We're also going to replace five pieces of mowing and field maintenance equipment in Parks and Recreation, also purchase a new wood and brush chipper, which will be very helpful when we have a storm event. Presently, employees have to transport the large limbs back and forth to, from the site to a dump site, and then have to pay dumping fees, and this chipper would also be available to park maintenance and public works operations. Also, for the first time in seven years, we plan to replace a non-public safety vehicle in code enforcement, which has a high, high-dollar cost of maintenance. Facilities improvements, $150,000 for the Sloan Convention Center, and that comes out of their funds, to replace wall coverings and refinish the woodwork. That would pretty much complete a total refurbishment of the interior of the building, plus funds to purchase some advanced audiovisual equipment. Carryforward funds from this year are to replace the carpet and paint the interior and exterior of the City Hall Annex. We also are recommending $60,000 to renovate the shower locker rooms at the Moxley Community Center used by fitness. The riverbank, at Ewing Ford Pump Station, we pump water from the river to irrigate crosswinds due to the storms we had in May of 2010 and 11. The riverbank there is destabilized, and if we don't do something, we're going to lose the pump station. It's also very precarious for employees to try to maintain it, so we're recommending funding to fix that problem. And as already mentioned, while we don't plan to actually start construction on the 800 megahertz radio system this coming year, we have already set aside almost $2 million toward construction, consulting services for planning and design are underway, and we expect this to be a project in the 2014 capital budget. In review, the capital budget for next year is virtually the same as for the year we're ending, but one big difference is we're only proposing the use of $750,000 in fund balance for the two shared cost road projects compared to last year, the year we're ending, we used $1.8 million of fund balance. So, basically, a million dollars more this coming year is coming from new revenues as opposed to old revenues. Again, as mentioned, total debt payment, we're not expecting any new debt, we're not recommending any new debt next year. Debt payments will go up slightly, just because of the schedules, 28% of our debt service is reimbursed by Western or Warren County, Western for Diddler Arena, Warren County, basically for their share of the ITA. And again, our debt service does include almost $6 million payment for the ballpark and for our share of, for the, well, for the total ITA, again, we get reimbursed for half of that. Just in review, again, we're continuing our priority community impact and road projects that we established in previous years. The CIP includes key improvements to several parks and recreation facilities, and we're also allowing for some vital equipment replacement and technology enhancements. Any questions about the CIP?
Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Okay, I'll turn it back to Katie Schaller, she is now going to cover agency appropriations.
As I mentioned earlier, the total amount of funding recommended for agencies for fiscal year 13 is down from fiscal year 12 by about $156,000. This is mostly due to the removal of three agencies, two of which we had phased out in the fiscal year 12 budget, that was Community Action Child Services, as well as Downtown Redevelopment Authority. The third agency is Capital Arts Alliance, and that organization will cease to exist in its existing form as of July 1st, so there's no funding recommended for them at this time. There are only five agencies currently that are being recommended for an increase in funding over the FY12 amount, the rest, with few exceptions, are going to be at the same FY12 funding level. The exceptions, the City County Planning Commission has actually requested less this year, the savings from that, about $25,000, is going to be used to help do some improvements to their facility, and we'll share in that cost with the county. The Friends of Allen and Depot, the amount proposed in this budget is enough money, it's $10,000, it's enough to cover their projected deficit, with the city and the county sharing a total of $20,000, so we each share 50% of that. Community Action Transportation, we are recommending that we give them an increase this year, and that's primarily to support their increased ridership. And again, I mentioned already about the Capital Arts Alliance. And here you can see, we've got 1.253 million set aside for agencies, and some other funding that we are proposing, each year, we do set some money aside for the airport to help cover any capital improvement projects that they have. We are required to provide a match for federal funding, and they have asked for some $43,135, and that is, again, to move forward on several of their improvement projects. And I believe Rob Burnett is here, if you wanted to ask any questions about those projects, but all that information is included in your packet from the agencies. An additional $10,000, like we've been doing the last few years, has been set aside for the continued effort in upgrading and replacement of the COA system that's located within the city limits, and/or by some additional equipment that help either initiate the COA system when there's a storm, or provide added security needed for that system. And then, as we've done since, I believe, 2006 or '07, the city has made a pledge to match any employee pledges dollar-for-dollar each year, and it's about $9,167 this year, up slightly from last year. So, in all, agency funding represents about 2.5% of the general fund expenditures. Couple of things I want to note before we get to questions, within your budget, you'll probably notice this year with the golf budget, we did create a new program, it's now called 4510, I believe is the number, it's their administration program within their budget. Our intent on doing that was to separate out those indirect costs, most of which are personnel, that are applied to each of the courses. What we wanted to do is actually have the course budgets be the course budgets, and take that indirect cost and have it being within its own program, all of which is still within the golf budget, so it's still within the bottom line of the golf budget. Are there any questions at this point?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the summary page, please?
Summary of...
Agency funding?
This one?
Yes.
It's going to be a little bit different from what's in your binder.
Yes, so I'm trying to figure out...
It's about $10,000 change, little under $10,000.
And that's just in the transportation, correct?
That's correct.
That's the only one that changed?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I might have sent out some information to you about that this morning, primarily that money, it has not changed our bottom line in the general fund budget, and that's because I was able to look at our fuel projections, lower that slightly based on the fact that we're running really good right now in fuel, and I don't want to jinx anything, but fuel costs are down right now, so I feel like we can afford that additional $10,000 by removing it from our fuel, and we've been transferring out money from general fund to help cover the additional fuel projections in the fleet fund, so that's ultimately why that bottom line has changed.
And I support the additional funding for Community Action on Transportation anyway, it was one of the, one of three things that I want to talk about, if I may, ma'am.
Sure.
The other two involve the Humane Society and the Warren County Regional Jail inmate mowing program. Between the two of those programs, we're talking about $7,955. I'm not ever going to complain about $7,000 or diminish $7,955, but given that we have $3.795 million in unencumbered fund balance, I would recommend that the Humane Society receive their $2,955, which is what they requested, which would get them up to their request level, and the inmate, the regional jail inmate mowing program would receive the $5,000 to get them up to their requested level, too. I think both provide an invaluable to the service to the city and the residents, and if we had to provide the service on our own, we could not provide it for the cost nor as efficiently as they do it. I'm looking for somebody to agree with me, Katie.
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Agree.
I think we're all right with that.
You're all in agreement to that? Okay, so the budget would then change slightly then by just under $8,000?
$7,290, if my math is right.
Okay, and you're all comfortable with that coming out of fund balance?
I'm sorry, that's wrong, $7,955.
Oh, wow.
Sorry. And let me be clear, it, for it to come from somewhere else is fine with me, I only mention that because when I served with Commissioner Stroud, and every time I recommended, you know, that we fund something more, he'd say, "Where's it going to come from?" So, I've conditioned myself to find where it's going to come from.
Okay, we have an adjusted figure on $8,759 to take them up to what they requested, both. Jeff just handed that to me. So, I can, if you prefer, again, looking at fuel projections, consider reducing down our transfer out of general fund by that additional $8,759. We are hoping fuel prices will stay low, obviously, we can't predict the future just yet, but we are looking at some other options in FY13 to help further reduce fuel prices by putting out a fuel bid that's going to bring several groups together and hope we can get some better pricing. It's up to you, if you would like for me to do that as well.
As opposed to taking out of the fund balance?
Yeah, ultimately, the bottom line of the general fund would remain the same.
That would be fine.
All funds would decrease slightly, like what we showed earlier today. So, are you all comfortable with that?
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Schaller. Is that the conclusion of the program?
That ultimately is the conclusion of the program. If you have any other budget questions, we'd be glad to answer those at this time. If you are prepared to move forward with a first reading of the budget, we can do that as well, if you'd like to do that tonight, otherwise, we would propose to do that at the June 19th meeting.
Normally, we have a special call meeting, but there have been no issues raised that would cause any concern, I think, for any of us, and rather than go to the expense of having all the employees here for a special meeting, I'd be in favor of adding it for a late file, even though I know that's not our normal procedure, but don't want to do anything to cause any trouble to everybody on board with that.
I agree, I'll block Slim out for you.
We might be setting a record by having a first reading of a budget, the first meeting of June, so...
I will say that I generally object to late-file items. I want to explain myself, though, if I may. I do not object to this particular one, I do, I generally object to late-file agenda items because I want people to have enough time to be able to consume it and respond to it, but because of the type of item that it is, and because there's going to be a special call anyway, it's essentially going to shorten the amount of time... special call anyway, it's essentially going to shorten the amount of time one way or the other, so all we're doing is shortening it on the front end by taking it on tonight as opposed to shortening it on the far end if we did it the other way around.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say, I think one reason we're able to add this tonight is because of the great job you all did answering our questions beforehand. Thank you all very much. Great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The only comment I have would be that you had me at no new taxes and no more new debt
Yes.
with this budget, so I think it was a wonderful job.
Did you have any other questions or anything like that?
I do want to express or reiterate what everybody's saying. You know, when we get this budget, I know you spent a lot of time, months, working on that, and although we only have a weekend to read this material, you know, we got our questions out to you, and you responded very quickly and thoroughly to help us be comfortable with moving forward. And like you say, with no new taxes, no additional bonding, we'll let you run the show. Anyone else?
We will have a budget ordinance ready. We're ready tonight to add to the agenda.
That'll work.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Fabo, anything else from you, sir?
No, sir.
Anyone on the commission have an issue to bring up?
Already finished.
A big part? Yes, sir. We'll close the work session and return back for 7 o'clock regular session. Thank you for tuning in.